By the Pledge of Peace.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather. We do thank you for this season where we're reminded of your gracious gift of your Son, Jesus Christ. We ask that you'd help us to live in peace and harmony with one another. We pray for our elected officials represented here and those throughout the community. The Lord already gave them wisdom, guide them in their decisions tonight and ongoing. We ask that you continue to bless our community and help us, Lord, to know our part in that process. So we entrust this meeting to you and we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen?
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. It is 5:30, Monday, December 16, 2019, and I'll call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council. Order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 Yeah.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. The first item of business on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, and I will call on our city administrator, Andrew Robson.
Thank you, Your Honor, members. Good evening. I do have one item to add this evening under new business, and that is a resolution related to the Transportation Alternatives Grant, which is on your desks this evening.
All right. With that, I would entertain a motion approving the agenda as amended.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second, Your Honor.
Motion is set. Now, if I say an aye?
Aye.
Oh, same. Sign that motion. There are no public hearings this evening, and there are no bids to award. Under petitions and communications, we have a presentation from the Bicycle Friendly Community Award, and I will call on Dave Anderson. Good evening, Dave.
Good evening. It's nice to be here tonight.
Did you ride your bike here this evening?
I did.
You did.
Almost. Four years ago, the city of Fergus Falls and Pedal Fergus Falls applied to the League of American Bicyclists to hopefully become a bike-friendly community. And we were designated at the bronze level, which was quite an accomplishment. This year, we had to reapply, and so this summer, we were elevated. Is this on?
You're good.
Okay. We were elevated to the silver level, which was really impressive. And part of the reason is, outside of the metro area, there are only 28 bike-friendly communities in Minnesota, and only one other community has attained that silver level. So it's pretty elite group. So I just want to thank the city staff and members of the city council for all the help and all the work you've done over the years. It's been really great, and we at Pedal Fergus Falls appreciate that, having had that opportunity to work together to get this done, to get to this point. Dorian Greeley is the executive director of the Bicycle Alliance of Minnesota. And Pedal Fergus Falls has worked closely with Dorian over the years and his staff. And we've really had a great relationship, and he's been tremendously helpful. In fact, he was up here about a month or so ago at meeting pieces for a get-together. And he really wanted to be here tonight, but he wasn't able to. So he has sent a letter to the city, and I think you may have a copy of that, but I'd like to read the letter. He wanted me to present that, so I will do that at this point. Dear Mayor Shire and city council staff and community members, On behalf of the League of American Bicyclists and the Board of Directors, staff, and supporters of the Bicycle Alliance of Minnesota, congratulations on receiving a silver-level bicycle-friendly community award. There are now 31 BFCs in Minnesota, and you are now one of the three with a silver ranking, along with St. Paul and Grand Marais, and one of the 102 nationwide. An impressive accomplishment. There is little doubt that your efforts to achieve the upgrade from bronze to silver ranking has been and will continue to be a wise investment. The benefits of being bicycle-friendly are well documented. Healthcare costs go down, land and home values go up, the community attracts a workforce and businesses that keep its economy strong, schoolchildren learn better, and residents are happier when they get outside. Like good schools and a thriving arts community, the BFC brand adds a quality-of-life ranking that will help sustain Fergus Falls well into the future and reinforce the message that including active transportation into your regular routine provides you greatest health, educational, economic, and environmental benefits. We have been particularly impressed with Fergus Falls' efforts to include the businesses community, business community, in the bicycle-friendly program. With 16 bicycle-friendly businesses, you have the most of any community in Minnesota, edging out Minneapolis by one.
Wow.
We are also very happy to see M State Fergus Falls achieve a ranking as a bike-friendly university, and pleased to have helped the school district include walking and biking safety in their curriculum. Working with everyone in Fergus Falls, especially the Pedal Fergus Falls advocates, has truly been a pleasure for all of us bike men. We look forward to a long relationship and do whatever we can to help advance, help you advance your transportation goals sincerely. Dorian Greeley, and I think he really sums it up. I think this is a pretty special, special award that we received, and I have a certificate from the League of American Bicyclists that I'd like to present to Mayor Ben Shire this time.
But thank you to the Pedal Fergus Falls for all the work that you do on behalf. That's really impressive. I mean, I know we talk about bicycling a lot in Fergus Falls, but to think that we're one of three silver bicycle-friendly communities in the state, along with one of only three communities that are bicycle-friendly and walk-friendly, and the fact that we're the, they have more bike-friendly businesses in Fergus Falls than any other community in Minnesota, that's, that's pretty impressive. I would just like to say thank you for all of your work. Thank you very much. All right. Moving along to the consent agenda. There are seven items on the consent agenda. You can receive the copy and unpack those items, put one on the board as well. If there's anyone who would like to speak to any of those topics individually, we will remove them. Or if not, I would entertain a resolution approving the consent agenda.
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Krista.
I'll second, Your Honor.
Thank you, Jim. Roll call, please.
Rupert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Item, under ordinance resolutions, we have nine items. The first is, first item number one is a first reading of ordinance 95, 7th series, amending 4.22 and 4.31 and renumbering chapters. Ralph, did you have any comments on this? Is this just simply organizing the city chart?
Yep.
We just would need someone to introduce that tonight. I'm sorry.
I'll have it.
Was it Tom?
I'll have it.
Krista and Jim, they both introduced it.
Just Krista. Item number two is a second reading of ordinance 96, 7th series, rezoning property along the 1700 and 1800 blocks of South Cascade Street from R.A. to R2, as requested by Rodness Development Company. This has been to committee, discussed it, has been introduced. If there's any questions, we have them now. If not, roll call, please.
Rupert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
That resolution, that ordinance is approved. Item number three is a resolution entering into an agreement with Otter Tail Power Company to provide all street lighting within the city limits. We had a lengthy conversation about this on Wednesday morning, but I would call on, Nathan from Otter Tail Power is here. Did you want to just kind of recap and give the general public an idea of this exciting project?
Yeah. So what I'm here to present to you tonight is an opportunity for Fergus Falls to partner with Otter Tail Power Company to replace the municipal whiteways in town. So early in 2019, Otter Tail completed a conversion of all the area lighting, basically the streetlights in town, from an HID fixture to an LED fixture. So the only remaining HID fixtures in town are actually owned by the municipality. So kind of a high-level overview, we've identified roughly 250 lights that OTP would have an interest in, or we have a tariff established that would fit into your light replacement plan. So phase one, which we're recommending we do in 2020, is going to consist of about 204 fixtures. I know we kind of went through. There's no power source, I don't know. Quick and fast, we're too easy here a little bit. So unless anybody wants me to go through the whole presentation again, there were some questions at the last meeting of committee of the whole on, you know, what are some of the energy savings, you know, kind of what would that equillate into dollars if we were to just do a straight comparison? So if we can kind of buzz through some of these slides here. Next one here. So I've gotten some questions from the public after the article was published in the journal about this inquiry here, about what the, what the LED lights look like. And I kind of thought it was an obvious, hey, they're all over town, there's 1700 of them. I converted this to what they look like, but we're just kind of going to bring that to attention here. So a good comparison of what it actually is going to accomplish, like I said, if you drive the North Union corridor, you see a very drastic change as you cross the overpass bridge there from the HID fixtures to the LED fixtures. So one of the other concerns that was brought to our attention was, hey, we don't want the light pollution or the backlight, if you will, shining in my windows, right? We haven't, of the 1700 lights we've replaced, we've maybe gotten two complaints, and we were able to address those by just simply adjusting the light. So one other option we have, if adjusting the fixture itself isn't correcting the issue, is installing basically a light trespass shield. So for anybody that has any concerns over light illuminating into their windows, we do have the option. So we kind of went over the monthly cost in the last presentation, and here's kind of an overview of what the energy savings would be. Now, keep in mind, these are projected energy savings, and as we discussed in the committee of the whole, we're not doing a apples-for-apples replacement here. We're, we have more efficient options. It's going to reduce the existing light count, and then we're also expanding some municipal whiteways as well, or, well, I won't say municipal whiteways, we're expanding some whiteways for municipal use. So if we were to just take the existing fixtures and replace them with LEDs and keep it on the energy-only rate, we're looking at about 75,000 kilowatt-hours over the life, projected lifespan, 15 years of the fixture. So to kind of put that in perspective, if you have a meter on the back of your house and it has one on it, that's one kilowatt-hour. So we're looking at about 75,000. You know, a question, I believe, was asked, well, what would that equillate into energy and like dollar savings? And over the 15-year life expectancy, it's around $215,000 is what would potentially be saved if you were to do the apples-for-apples replacement. Just kind of a slide of the conversion, you know, one of the other pieces is like the, go buy an LED light bulb at the store, it's a 12 watts, but it's equivalent to 60 watts in its incandescent form. So here's just kind of the chart of what the wattage is and what its LED replacement wattage is. You can kind of see where the, where the savings would be there, as well as the cost of energy, if you had them on the cost of energy rate, what the dollar savings would be. So majority of the fixtures that are currently in the city are these HPS44s, so you can see that there's a pretty significant wattage save, and then it doesn't take long for the dollars to add up when you're talking about an eight-dollar difference, basically. We kind of went over, you know, if the city were to choose to do their replacement on their own, kind of what the costs are. We, you know, if we base it off of that last bullet point, the 250,000 for the 23 fixtures, you're looking at basically $3 million roughly to finance and do the project yourself. So our path forward, I guess, is we're here tonight to hopefully execute our contract with the city and get the lighting project underway in 2020.
Thank you, Nathan. And Noah, so thanks to Otter Tail Power for working on this with the city. But I really want to say to the city staff, thanks for working on this as a council. We've talked about meaningful yet achievable ways that we can reduce our energy consumption as a city and lead the way, and working with the private sector to do that, and this is a perfect example. So thank you, staff, for working with Otter Tail Power to bring this forward, because this is truly, in my opinion, a win-win for everybody in the community. So thank you, Nathan. Thank you, staff.
Could I ask one question, Ben?
Yeah, please do.
Scott? I'm afraid I wasn't at the committee of the whole meeting. I had to be out of town. I apologize for that. But in the diagrams that were presented, there is a picture of the standard.
Yep.
And the foundation appears to have kind of a screw on the bottom of it.
Correct.
Is there a, is the foundation for this typically just a?
There we go. Yep.
Does it include concrete as well, or is it just a pipe with the screw on the bottom of it?
Yep. So that's actually what we call a screw-in base. So it's roughly five feet long, it's got a helix on the end of it, so there is no concrete associated with this. So the standards that we use are spun aluminum standards, so they're significantly lighter than what the current steel standards would be. So, I mean, it's all engineered and designed to.
And if I remember just to that point, it's a breakaway base that's safer for if there were a collision with cars.
I noted that was in there, and I think that's good.
Yeah, it's safer for the public as well. Lighting's safer, the breakaways. Any other questions? Would someone like to offer the resolution?
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Brent. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Rupert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Fish. Yes.
That resolution is approved.
Thank you, council. Look forward to working on this project.
Thank you.
Item number four is a resolution approving the 2020 rates for the Pebble Lake Golf Course. Kevin. Spencer. Welcome. Good evening, sir.
Greetings, Mayor Shire, council. I don't get to come visit you guys very often, so.
That's a good thing.
I still invite all of you to come and see the golf course. So I'm here to get approval on our 2020 rates. We had a board meeting last Monday, and we went through membership rates and our daily rates, and we always decided to go with an increase on our new rental carts, our daily, our membership seasonal rates on those. We wanted, we did an increase in our membership rates last year, all the way through the different age brackets, families, singles, and handicap fees, private cart fees for people that own their own cart storage, stuff like that. We kept everything the same because we increased them pretty significantly last year, and we are very confident with the courses that we compete with. The rental carts, we leased all new carts last year, they have the GPS, they have Bluetooth, they were well-received, and I think it contributed a lot to our guests that came back and played numerous times last summer.
Do the, do the walls have GPS? Do that's helping the law? But I'm losing, I'm out there.
I can help the administrators if you want. The only increase we are proposing is the, our seasonal cart rental membership, like the members that rent our carts. So.
Sure.
That's all that, our daily rates, we raise those a dollar every year, and we went a dollar this year.
Well, thank you, Kevin. Is there questions from the council? It looks like that's $50, correct? $50 increase in the.
Yep.
Seasonal cart rental program.
I've got a couple of facts I want to give you, as from last season, too.
Sure.
I want to approve those, Krista.
Sure. Any?
I can offer that, Your Honor.
Offer that, Justin. Thank you. Someone like to second that?
I'll second.
Thank you, Krista. Any questions, Kevin? Let's see. I'll favor that resolution. Roll call, please.
Rupert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
That resolution. All right, now hit us with those backs.
All right. So since I don't get to come and see you guys very often, I want to let you know some numbers that we did last season, just so you know where we're at. From the golf course standpoint, we had a very short season. We opened April 22nd. Our goal is always April 1st. We closed seven days before April 15th. So typically, we try to have a business plan of 190 days of golf course usage. This year, we're over a month short. With that, the last two seasons, we had 16,000 rounds, which means we might not track every player that plays around golf at Pebble Lake. This year, we had 18,103 rounds, which is up 21,000 rounds over the last two seasons. Of those 18,000 rounds, 8,900 of those rounds were member-played rounds, 2,152 of those rounds were tournament rounds, which is my junior youth tournaments, all the way through the high school tournaments, M State's tournaments, our corporate outings, stuff like that. And 7,000 rounds were rounds that people actually came and paid to play, guest rounds, which I watched that number closely, 8,900 member rounds, those are the members that pay their membership early in the spring and have a limited golf. 7,000 of those rounds were paid by a guest from out of town, and they're very close, which is unheard of. So our, it contributes to about $16,000 more this year than last year in guest fees that we've been making, so.
Nice.
Very nice. We hosted 39 golf events, 28 non-golf events, so a total of 67 events held at the golf course. We had no weddings this, this year, this, this last season. This year, we're going to have three. The previous year, we had six, so I think last year was a down year in weddings, stuff like that. Our driving range continues to grow. My kids camp maintained at 76 kids that I have twice a week for eight weeks. On any given Sunday, if you go out there in the afternoon, and Jim can attest that of the 25 stations in our driving range, 20 of those are kids that are this tall or shorter, and they hit tens of thousands of golf balls. Our range buckets are, we sold 4,438 range buckets that were hit last year, which equivalates to 333,000 of golf balls hit on our driving range. So the golf course is getting well-used, so.
That's good. That's good to hear.
Anyway.
Any questions, Kevin?
He can fix your golf game, Ben.
What's that?
He can fix your golf game.
Yeah, one thing that's, I'm excited this next year is that we're hosting a regional blind golf tournament for blind players, and I'm fortunate to, I work with a blind player from Battle Lake, and we're bringing 30 to 40 blind players coming from all over the country.
Really?
That'll be coming in August, so.
That's great.
So it's very cool.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Kevin.
All right. Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Item number five is a resolution agreeing, I'm sorry, approving an agreement with Outstate Brewing Company to allow private parking on city property. And Guy, did you want to take this?
Sure. So as we talked about at the committee meeting on Wednesday, Outstate Brewing has approached the city, inquiring if the city would allow them to use some city-owned property for extending their parking lot. Councilmember Hicks asked if we could have an overlay of their site plan onto the aerial portal. Pretty hard to see, but you can see where their parking has been planned for along and into that easement and the property that they own, and they would extend into that 25 feet of city-owned land, the distance from the south line right away down to the edge of that rough area by the riverbank.
Anthony. I was going to say, I can't, do you mind if I?
Do you have a pointer? Yes, I don't.
There we go.
If you can zoom in still, it'd be nice. But it's, here's, they've got eight parking spots right in here. So this is land that they own, so they've got eight there, a few along here, this is an easement going into these properties here. And a few along the building on the east side, and then they would propose to the city, they could use this, they would improve it, they would pave it, they would do all the maintenance in exchange for the use of it. I think they would get another four, maybe five spots out of that. And it would be not just for their use, it would be also for the use of this business owner and the couple that are here along Vine Street also.
Thank you, Guy.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah. I just wanted to see where it was relative to their building and.
Sure. Is that clear, you mentioned that it can be used, obviously, because of city-owned, they're improving it with the other businesses in the area. Is that clearly stated in any agreements?
Well, we don't have an actual agreement with them, but.
We could do an agreement. We do have a current agreement with an existing establishment to allow for use of a public parking area where they're maintaining it. I believe it's one of the churches.
Baptist church.
Baptist church. So, I mean, we, you know, we can have some type of a formal agreement that's a few of like.
That must be a good idea.
YMC is a good example. Yeah, YMCA as well, and just basically a use agreement that reserves and makes it clear that if we need to go in there and maintain or use it for our purposes, we do that.
Yeah, and I think important, like when you think about the Y or the Baptist church, they don't have other businesses in the same area, so just laying out that this is a public use, you're improving it, but it's intended to be used by businesses in the area. Like, I can come back with an agreement. Is that good for the better?
No, I think that's good.
So with that, we'll enter into a resolution with the understanding that the city attorney will bring back the agreement. Is there someone that would like to offer that?
I'll lay that.
Thank you, Anthony.
I can second it.
Thank you, Caroline. Roll call.
Rupert. Yes.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved.
Ben, could I ask one follow-up question? It wasn't a part of the resolution. Can I ask one question?
Certainly.
That's a not-paved area now, and the area to the north of that is not paved, but I don't expect they're going to pave the area to the north connecting up to Vine Street. So does the city have a plan for that? Maybe you know that guy, or maybe not.
I don't think there's a plan.
Okay.
Unless somebody petitions for it.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Item number six is a resolution approving Short Elliott and Hendrickson as Fergus Falls' Municipal Airport Consultants, and I will call on the city engineer, Brian Devry. Good evening, Brian.
Good evening, your mayor and members of the council. Federal regulations require a quality-based election process be completed for consultants for any project FAA-funded that receives entirely or partially airport improvement funds, such as for Fergus Falls Municipal Airport. The FAA provides some guidance documentation that we have followed in regards to selecting an architect-engineering firm, primarily states consultants must be engaged on the basis of their qualifications and experience, but fees determined through those negotiations on the court. Because of this, I followed that RFQ process requesting qualifications. It was advertised in the paper and Fergus Falls Forum. I received two responses at the time. Both of these RFQs, those were solicited and sent through the Airport Advisory Board, where each member had an opportunity to review the consultants. The Airport Advisory Board voted unanimously to designate and maintain SEH as our Municipal Airport Consultant. This designation is recorded and maintained with the FAA on a five-year term. This is the last on 2014, so we're following standard protocol for the FAA. So I'm requesting approval of the designation of Short Elliott Hendricks, SEH, as the Fergus Falls Municipal Airport Professional AAE Consultant.
Thank you, Brian. Are there questions? Jim?
Yeah, this is who we've used for a number of years.
Yes. Yes, they have. Yes, they have. We discussed all that and everything, and we feel very comfortable with the best part
performance.
They've done a good job.
Scott?
You said you had received two proposals. What was the other proposal? What other organization or company?
Bolton and Nick. I had some other calls from others, consultants in the area, and that they... But they did not submit, so it's required like a bid opening to actually submit per the required directions, move the document.
Any other questions? Somebody like to offer that resolution?
I'll lay that, Your Honor.
Approving that agreement as a consultant. Thank you.
I'll second it.
Anthony, thank you. Justin, for the questions for our city engineer. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Fish.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
The resolution is approved. Thank you. Thank you, Brian. Item number seven, we will need a motion approving the 2020 board and commission members. There's a copy on your desk. If anyone has any questions, I'm not going to go through all of them. I will note that there's still one vacancy on the sister cities commission. And then, there's... Working with Lynn today, and she's the one, she did a great job of reaching out and getting word out and taking the applications in. And we worked through this today, made some of these points. There are a couple possibly... There's possibly a change with the planning commission and also with the library board that could come to you in January. Of course, if there were any changes, you guys have to approve those. But just to let you know that some last-minute changes have been talked about today, but we're not ready to bring those forward. So, I guess we're asking for this free motion to approve the... Let's present it.
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
I'll second.
Thank you. Jim, thank you. Krista, any questions? I'll favor that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. Item number eight is a resolution approving a contract with Collaborative Design Group for the RTC Master Plan. And I'll call on Ryan Miller.
Good evening, Ryan.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening, members of council. Back in October, an RFP for the Fergus Falls RTC Master Plan was sent out. It was open for four weeks. It was sent out to over 50 consulting firms with a capacity for master planning services. It was also shared extensively locally and posted online, a couple of websites. It was closed on November 22nd, and we received three proposals for the RTC Master Plan. A preparation and evaluation committee reviewed all three proposals and sought them based off of some criteria that were outlined. The committee has made a recommendation to accept the proposal received by the Collaborative Design Group. They were the highest-scoring proposal. We also received proposals from a team of Stan Tech and McDonald Mac and another team of Miller, Dunwoody, and HKJ. But the committee is recommending the proposal from Collaborative Design Group. If approved, Collaborative Design Group would enter into a contract with them to complete the master plan process. They proposed to start right away in January and finish by the end of July 2020. They had a proposed cost not to exceed $61,500 for the master plan. $20,000 of that will be covered by a state-certified local government grant. The city had previously committed to $31,500 in matching dollars, so we are looking at an additional $10,000 grant to cover the remainder for a total cost of $61,500.
Thank you, Ryan. Are there any questions from the council?
Did you say that it was an additional $10,000 grant?
Yes. So, the total cost is for the contract would be $61,500. We have a current grant from the state for $20,000. And when that grant was applied for, the city committed to a match of $31,500, so that would bring us to $51,500. I think there was discussion of other grants to cover that $10,000. None have been received at this point, but we're looking into an additional grant to cover that.
Any other questions for Ryan? Scott?
I'd like to introduce the resolution and then...
Certainly. Let's get a second real quick. Someone like to second that?
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. Go ahead, Scott.
At the beginning of your comments, Ryan, I think you said that this was sent out to 50 organizations, but I think it was 50 individuals, but there were multiple names for given organizations. I don't know that the total number of organizations solicited really was 50. It might have been 30-something, but it was... I don't know that it was 50.
There were some on the list that had, yeah, multiple representatives, but it was emailed directly to a large list of firms and consultants that do this type of work, and then it was shared widely after that.
And I support the resolution. I think that the presentation that was received by Collaborative Design Group was a very good one, and I strongly support we go forward with this.
Thank you, Scott. And you served on that review process from the council. Thank you for doing that, Scott.
I think one of the things it does say is that it would be looking at establishing a working group slash steering committee. I'd like to kind of say that we need to do a better job of getting a balance on that committee. You know, there are... Whether we like it or not, there are a lot of people that have, you know, that don't necessarily see the RTC in the same light as other people. So, I think, you know, we need a balance of people that are for and against on the committee.
So, and who... How's that?
Yeah, Your Honor, councilmember Hicks. The city council will be the ones to determine the committee. So, we'll talk as a group here about what that selection process will look like. And, you know, my initial thought is maybe each of you could submit an A or something along those lines, and we'll use that to create the group.
Thank you.
We'll talk more as a little, small group that's been working on this through the selection process and bring back some ideas on how we do that.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments on the resolution before we vote?
Roll call, please. Hang on. One other question. What do we actually get by doing this? I mean, we're going to spend $61,000. What do we actually get for it ultimately?
So, on a higher level, we will get two alternative concepts for redevelopment of the RTC campus. Within those concepts, they will have a breakdown of more detail on reuse of buildings, you know, the full footprint of the buildings, pro formas and financials for the various reuse options. And there will be some additional studies in there as well for transportation, structural, all those various studies that need to go into. Coming up with two concepts for the use of the campus. And then, there will be an implementation plan for that as well, and how to get, you know, whichever preferred alternatives chosen.
Good point.
And just to remind people, the ship was the one, and we were working with the state legislature and working on the compromises that allowed us to secure the $3.49 million. This was one of the things that we had agreed to do in order to get that compromise and get that fund so we could move forward on phase two of the deconstruction. So, just remember that. Did you have anything else to add, Andrew?
No, that's exactly what I was going to say. This is part of our mitigation strategy to be able to move forward on the phase-two demolition that was just completed this summer.
With that, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 No.
Fish.
Yes.
Paper.
Yes.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Thank you, Ryan. Item number nine is a resolution approving flushable white settlement agreement. And Andrew, would you like to take this?
Yep. Thank you, Your Honor, members. As you may or may not know, the city, for a long time, has been part of a class-action lawsuit related to companies that label their products flushable that have caused some damage to wastewater treatment plants. Long story short, we've reached several settlements with other parties to the lawsuit and have currently brought in just over $50,000 as it relates to those settlements. We are asking the council to approve the final settlement this evening with the final party to the lawsuit. It is a confidential settlement, so I'm not going to be able to disclose terms this evening, but I will state that there's... Through this settlement, there's no additional funds that will be coming to the city of Fergus Falls as a result of the settlement, but we would be pleased to see this entire process come to a completion and move on. It's been fairly time-consuming and has gone on now for about five years, so hoping that the council's on board. Every city that's part of the class-action is going to be approving this settlement agreement prior to Wednesday's deadline to get these things signed and back to the other party.
Thank you. Andrew, is there any questions? Is there someone who'd like to offer that resolution?
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Krista.
I'll second.
Thank you, Tom. Roll call. I'm sorry, Jim.
Yes. When I read this on my phone and I saw this, and right... I didn't notice that right below was claims. I thought, "We're getting $2,100,000." That's a lot of bucks. But no, that was the claims part of it. On the phone, it's awfully small.
Thank you, Jim. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved.
Fish, you got an update from the flip phone, maybe then you could see it.
Hey, whatever works.
Item under presentation of claims tonight, we have claims in the amount of $2,178,795.59. And if there was someone who'd like to offer a resolution?
I'll offer the resolution to pay the bills.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Brent. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
The resolution is approved. Under board committee and department reports, we have no reports. We have no reports from staff or administrative officers. There is no old or unfinished business under new business. There's an item that's on your desk, which Andrew referred to at the beginning, and that is a transportation alternatives program application. And Andrew, would you like to walk us through that?
Clara.
I'm sorry, Clara. Community Development Manager. Good evening, Clara.
Good evening, sir. Councilmembers, back in October, I think we were going to be putting forward a letter of intent to apply for transportation alternatives program funding for updates to Kestrel and Ariah and Union Avenue.